Ian is really representative of the types of shows that we're doing nowadays. You know, modern artists, that's right, carrying fantastic people to the crowd, really vibrant energy, and show the type of art that we showcase here at Forest Lawn.
The first major series of work that Ian became famous for was his conceptual multiple exposure paintings. What he would do is he would travel the world, he would take his camera with him, and he would capture photographs of scenes that he found to be appealing. Scenes that he felt he could translate from film over paint.
The fact that Ian's art has had so much of an impact on people to tell stories of his life and what he experienced and what he was about in his paintings, is what I think is something that's great.
Yeah, he produced a large number of paintings, 2,000 paintings and 4,500 drawings that we know of. That, uh, that we see a sizable quantity of bigger than works, but he placed less of an emphasis on those than he did on landscapes and still.
Part of our mission is always to bring art to the masses, to places where it's educating and uplifting to the community. So having routine events come through our museums is another way that we can get back to it.
I just really appreciate that Forest Lawn opened this up to public. I think it's very nice and it's nice that they opened up for us so I can bring other people in here and share about the experience.
So if you have any questions, give me a call or just visit us at forestlawn.com. Thank you. That's me. Thank you, Russ, for helping us better understand how we might do business with you. A key part of LA5's four-way test. And now, please welcome Carol Shaver, owner of Carol Shaver Mine Jewelry to the roster to lead us in our celebration of July birthdays.
Well, we are so excited today because July birthday, I probably conceived in October, so there may be a little bit of galling going on today. Anyway, would you please come up here if you plan to come here, if you have a birthday this month in July? I know that two of you, come on, come on, have a birthday today, so if you would let us know the day of your birthday. If you have a significant birthday, I want to share, that's okay too, or if you don't. Just let us know where you were born. No doubt, more than anything, I will, you know, it's a significant birthday, but I'm not going to tell that.
(laughing)
Captain Stein, my birthday July 18th, 1941, and I've been a member of Lori Club since 1984.
Thank you.
Born in Monterey Park, California.
Perry Edgar, unfortunate birthday, the same day as today. Been at the club since 1990.
Jim Simas, July 3rd, 1950, been at the club 30 years, San Francisco.
Mr. Kathy Turner, been at the club since 2004, and I'll probably get fined for this, but fuck less, didn't mention about Forest Lawn. He did say the foundation, the scouts just got $500,000 for their new swimming pool and bath house from the Forest Lawn foundation. And of course, he never did like my motto, and that was, it's better to know us and not need us, and to need us and not know us.
(inaudible) in Long Island, California, if you remember this stuff, the same day.
And the line of the native y'all, let's sing happy birthday to our birthday. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday to your birthday, and many more.
Happy birthday, all of you. Thank you, Carol. Before you're seated, I want you to know how much we appreciate the outstanding job that you're doing leading our birthday celebration each month. And we want to wish your husband, John, the best of luck as he undergoes his treatment next week in Singapore. So you'll get our prayers. John, Carol, and your foster parents as well. Today, we have our third new member to introduce this for review, even though he was approved before June 30th, the past president, Megan. Would Matthew, Lady Chairman, Lady Eagle Group, and your sponsor, Kim Chong, Vice President, CID Residential, and our president-elect, please join me at the roster. Matthew, please take a minute to tell us about yourself and why you're committed to joining Rotary.
Hello, everyone. It's a pleasure, Steve, chapter of Rotary organization. Um, a little bit about me, I'm from the east, uh, you know, I came to Los Angeles originally, college, SC, college near and dear to Ken, my professor.
(laughing)
And since then, I attended law school. No, I attended law school and worked in New York for a few years, then returned to LA along with the brother Parker. We started our law firm in 2008, and our practice emphasis is corporate entertainment transactional innovation. Other than that, Rotary is an organization certainly that has, you know, branches all over the world, which I think is amazing, and a great community involvement in all these different places all over the world. I myself, I've always been sort of the kind of person to give back, I mean, I was a direct beneficiary in my youth of others, you know, I've specifically facilitated my entire life, and Rotary certainly provides another vehicle for me to increase my community involvement. Here in Los Angeles, to make it for the LA, I guess, but it's all of us, thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Thank you, Matthew, and welcome to LA5. Along with your commitment to Rotary, I hope you'll commit to pass our four-way test this year to sponsor a new member, join a committee, be a donor, and do business with Rotary. Here's Mr. Stetson, we all look forward to your performance. When Sally Gallagher, Vice President and Treasurer of Chelsea Management, please join me at the roster. The 62nd Annual Salvation Army Red Shield Sports Award banquet is coming up next month. Please make a note on your calendar, August 14th. Sally's chairing our new Salvation Army standing committee. Sally, please take two minutes to tell us more about your plans and how we can all volunteer for this outstanding annual event.
Thank you, President J. Yes, August 14th is the sports banquet, it's placed at the Red Shields Community Center, just the 11th. It is an exciting event, and talk to some of the participants from the past years that have worked with all year, and what makes it ever so successful is all the volunteers from the Rotary Club of Los Angeles. So I'm looking for volunteers, both for the setup, which is August 13th, and for the day of the banquet, which includes two barbecue chefs. So I need two people that can handle barbecues, and I will be in the back to talk to you further as we meet any volunteers, to get to them, to put them in the question, to have a good event, what's up this time. So go LA5! I got that one, Jay. Anyone else? All right, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Please join us in the office. Would Hal Barso, International Relations, Los Angeles Maritime Institute, and Chair of our Welcome Room photograph committee, please join me at the roster. Hal?
Here it goes.
Hal, please tell us about the upcoming tall ships volunteer training opportunity.
Eric knows who we are because we're the international tall ships in the city of Los Angeles, at the Los Angeles Maritime Institute, and we have a unique and exciting volunteer opportunity to propose to any member of LA5 if we feel more to some of our younger members like John Flaherty. But we are, on August the 11th, inviting all LA5 Rotarians to the Los Angeles Maritime Institute to learn how to sail as a volunteer crew with official tall ships in Los Angeles, and no prior sailing experience is necessary. We will train you how to sail a square rigged ship, we will teach you what our mentoring program is all about with our intercity outbursts of kids in LA, and you will have the time of your life. There's no other volunteer experience anywhere in Los Angeles that allows you to go to sea and do this kind of thing. We, this year, are celebrating our 20th year of success dealing with kids in Southern California. Please attend the meeting, if you would like to volunteer, love to have you. It's Saturday, August 11th, two weeks from tomorrow, at 10:00 AM in our offices in San Pedro, which, as Eric knows, is part of the city of Los Angeles, a lot of people don't think it is, but it is, and we hope to see many LA5 Rotarians there. Please join us with a fire on your table. Call me to sign up because space is limited. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Hal. Would Denny Dyne, Vice President of Sales, Underbridge Photo Service Inc., and Chair of our Roster Committee, please join me at the roster. You're doing a great job, working hard to put together the 2012-2013 directory for our club. Please tell us more about some very important deadlines that are coming up here.
Thank you, President J. I'd like to thank everyone who has participated, who are purchasing that space in the law directory. I'd like to encourage those people who have not, to think about it and place an ad in the directory. By advertising, you have an opportunity to introduce your company to your fellow Rotarians. As of now, we have over 80 advertisements have signed up. All our covers are taken, we still have two tab pages that are ready, we have 10 of them, we have two of them still for sale, they're $800 each, we print them full cards and divide for books. The other sizes are full page ads, price of $400, half page ad, $250, and business card, what we call a third page ad, is $125. The bonus by advertising in the directory, you're also able to take out an ad in our website, and the price is only $100. Our deadline, the first deadline is August 1st, which is coming up next week, and that is to place an order for a book. Now, if you call me on August 5th and say you want a book, I'll go in, bloods row with delivery date. August 15th is the last day for copy, as we put the book together. Either contact Bob Aldrich, or Chairman, or myself, or Rotary Office, if you want any further details. And one last note, if you're going to change your profile in the Rotary directory, if you photograph, if you have a new business, a new resident, difficult change, email or whatever, this is the time to take that information and email it to Jennifer at Rotary Office, she'll go ahead and make that change. I want to thank you in advance for participating in the program, you guys are bang, out buying outstanding people. Thank you.
Thanks, Ian. I have my recorder in for a cab at the directory, and I hope you'll do so as well, we have two more remaining. I think Denny said it was a lifetime record? No, thank you. Would Barry Siegel, Chair of the Community Service Project, please join me in the roster? Barry, we are most fortunate to have you leading this effort for the club. Please take a couple of minutes, tell us how we all become more involved in the hands-on service above self activities planned by your committee.
Thank you, President J. Most of you who know me know that I spent my whole life in the nonprofit sector, and I've been very fortunate to be able to meet some wonderful people. So when I joined LA5, the first thing that attracted me was the motto, "Service Above Self," because that's my main interest in life and my main interest in Rotary Club. I was very fortunate that President Megan asked me to share the community service project organization. This is made up of about 30 executive directors who are members of LA5. We have within our organization some of the biggest and the best nonprofits in LA, like the Red Cross, Salvation Army, the oil industry, et cetera. But we also have smaller nonprofits that are doing valuable work and are making a tremendous impact on people's lives. When I was, started in LA5, my first job was gateway chair, and then membership, and during the course of that time, I had an opportunity to meet a lot of new members. The one thing that stuck with me as I interviewed them was that many of them said community service was the reason that they were joining LA5. And therefore, we have created a term, Megan's help, the Megan's help, adding more community service projects to our calendar. Every year, we have the traditional Camp Iberia and the Salvation Army dinner, and so on, but we've added more. We just heard from Hal Barso about one of those new experiences, which is the tall ships. Abby and I were out on the Fourth of July on one of the tall ships, some of the people that were crewing the ships were people who had come through this program that Hal talked about, had learned, these were kids from the ghetto, had learned the beauty of the sea, and were now crewing the ships. So I urge you to come and help these young people learn how to add dimension to their lives. Every year, we have events, and we hope that you will live up to what you said when you joined. We had a bowling party with ability first several months ago, tried that, it was a wonderful experience, I saw people in wheelchairs, basically pretty new ball, uh, bowl for the first time. Something like Gary Turner and other Rotarians helped them put a ball on a ramp, aim the ball down the lane, and you should have seen their faces when the kids went down. That is what we call a Rotary moment, that stays with you for the rest of your life. Coming to our lectures is only one aspect of being a Rotarian. The real excitement comes in getting out and helping other people. So I urge you seriously to listen when we make announcements from month to month about what's going on, and write these days in your calendar, this is where you're really going to have a Rotary moment and an opportunity to meet your fellow Rotarians in a much more informed setting. So thank you, President J, for encouraging, continued to encourage our community service program. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Would Arthur Cassell, CEO of Flexercise International and our Vice Chair of Programs, please join me at the roster? Thank you for securing our esteemed speaker today and for doing an outstanding job as your Vice Chair of Programs. Please take a couple of minutes to introduce the Honorable Eric Cassell.
It is my pleasure to introduce public servant in every sense of the word, Councilman Eric Cassell. Eric is a bright spot in our city, Rhodes Scholar, Fall Professor at USC at Occidental. He has been nationally recognized for his leadership on the biggest issues, whether creating jobs in the new economy, challenging the foreclosure crisis, or protecting civil rights. He was elected four times by his peers as Council President. For those of you that know that it's hard to get two city council people to agree on anything, let alone three, or four, or five, or to get a majority, and to be able to stay in office and get elected that four times means you have to have at least eight members of the council voting for you every time that one's been elected. So that is probably his biggest feat, and why he's a great, great person that deals with people helping him, and I know firsthand what he's done. He used his abilities to build coalitions, as I mentioned, to protect Los Angeles from the bankruptcy, the scene in other cities throughout the dramatic pension, cities in other cities, throughout California, through the dramatic pension reforms and other measures. He was able to secure concessions from some of the unions that I didn't thought was possible. And he's done that, but keeping everybody at the table happy, which is a miracle. But at the same time, he stepped up to lead on a national and citywide level. He's always been someone who's never lost sight in the street-level help of the neighborhoods he represents. Those of you who have been in LA for a long time like I have, should agree that the improvements Eric has brought to Hollywood, Silver Lake, Patwater Village, and Echo Park are nothing less than miraculous. Economic development, reducing crime, to tripling the number of parks. Eric is a fourth-generation Angelino, a reserve officer in the US Navy, and someone I'm proud to call my friend. And he's just a wonderful, wonderful person, and I'm very happy and honored to be able to introduce him, Eric Cassell.
Thank you, Vice Chairman, my friend Eric. Thank you, President J, and to our board, Rotarians, guests that are here today, it's really great to return here. Thank you so much for being here and inviting me back. It's always been an honor to be before Rotarians, and I've done that, I believe, on four continents. Always, when I go to a town, it may be another city in America, it may be a small village in the foreign of Africa, and when I see that Rotary sign, I know that we're in a town conscious, that has a community, and that has passion and purpose, and I thank you for the way that you serve your communities and your world. You know, today, that seems to be something that is slipping through our fingers. We have, in this elected life, under politics, oftentimes we see leaders who seek to divide us, point out our differences, instead of finding as Americans and as citizens of the world, those things that unite us. And here in Los Angeles, which is clearly the crossroads of the world, we have not only a responsibility, but a great privilege, to bring that world together in LA5, the fifth and, no offense, Rotarians' best Rotary Club in the world. I'm very proud of the Rotarians. You know, when I think of LA5, I think of kind of the unstoppable force of nature that you are, and it very much mirrors the unstoppable force that we, Los Angeles, do. And, you know, when we look at what's going wrong in the world, what goes wrong in government, I've been asked here to come today to speak about the state of our city, and that's usually a job that goes to the mayor's job, I'm not the mayor yet, but I will give it a good try. I am very much a child of LA, and I wanted to start by just articulating before we get into the bad news, what we need to fix. It's always important for us to take a moment to breathe in this, its greatness, and to articulate those values that make up Los Angeles. I mean, we're free human beings that could be living anywhere, or visiting anywhere, but we're here today in Los Angeles, and I believe we're here for a reason. We're here because we see our destiny and the destiny of this place intertwined, and the values that underpin us, this incredible human capital that we have, the creative industries we have, from art and entertainment, music. We look at the intellectual capital that we have here, three great university research institutions in the city, we have Caltech, which has more hats coming out of that university than any in the world, UC's are second, we combined all of the campuses, and we've got one of them here, and USC is an extraordinary place doing great research. When we look at those three institutions, when we look at all the rest of the real institutions here, when we look at the weather that we have, our geography, the people, LA is poised for greatness. And in fact, we have defined what greatness is. We believe in ourselves, just, you know, days ago, we can see that creativity when we saw private company, which was the first satellites, a dock, the space station, when we see the research that's going on to cure diseases at our hospitals. Sometimes we get down on ourselves, on my people. All you have to do is see Los Angeles through the eyes of visitors to realize what our greatness is. But we see bad news in the paper, the headlines about Stockton, Compton, San Bernardino, and perhaps it's best that I talk today and start with the state of our city by discussing our budget. It's no more important public policy issue certainly that I've addressed and that you need to know about. Let me be clear, does LA face big problems? Yes, absolutely. But are we at the risk of following Stockton or San Bernardino, the road towards bankruptcy? Absolutely not, and I'll tell you why. Four years ago, it was projected that we would be bankrupt in five years. We have a very diverse economy here, many different streams of income that come into our city. In the past years, property taxes were up, sales tax were down, the sales tax was up, property taxes were down, there was usually a balance, but in 2008, all of our revenue sources fell off the hook. It was projected that we had about five years before the cost of our pensions and our personnel costs, because 85% of what the city pays for is people, would drive us, based on the revenues that we lost, to bankruptcy. And it was projected that this past year, we would have 1.1 billion dollars deficit. When you look at Washington DC, where it seems more important for both sides to defeat the other than to actually solve our nation's deficit, when you look at Sacramento, where they kick the can and say, "I'm sure more money will come in," and then every three months, they say, "Whoops, it didn't come in, I guess we have to make more cuts." LA stands in stark contrast to those places. We looked at that deficit, and we stared it to the eye, and we stared it down by coming together. It's very easy in politics to be rewarded if you hold a press conference, if you're in a position like mine, beat your chest and say, "Who the bad guys are?" We saw that happen around the country, we saw governors, we saw mayors, we saw the people saying, "Here's the enemy, this is why the deficit has occurred." But I always find, when you believe, for instance, the public sector union should or should exist, and you can respectfully disagree about that, just tactically, it doesn't seem to be the smartest negotiation tactic, to start demonizing another side of the books. In fact, you get less out of partners if you treat them as enemies instead of as collaborators. I think this is a lesson in life and not just in government. We are taking dramatic steps here in Los Angeles. The markets are responding to us, and it's paying off for the taxpayers. Just a couple of weeks ago, we went to the market with something called a revenue anticipation number. It's basically the money that we go to the market to get to front end before our taxes come in, because we have to pay for things in the early months. We got the highest bond rating from all three bond rating companies, when just two or three years ago, they were saying they were headed south and were down ratings. We got two basis points, which is like, you know, on a $10 loan, two cents, it's almost free money, because it reflected what we had done to make sure that we downsized the size of government here in Los Angeles, that we made sure that we dealt with the pension reform and healthcare costs. And while nobody runs for government to take things away necessarily, government has to behave the same way a business or a household does. We have to balance our budgets, and so too does government. In fact, no matter what your politics are, left or right, it is the only right thing to do, because if you don't, two or three months, two or three years later, you'll have nothing left of services to provide. In fact, I had some colleagues who said, "Ooh, we have a deficit, let's take an ax to govern." And while that would have balanced the budget, we wouldn't have recognized our city, we probably would have kept our police and our fire services, but libraries would have been only open a couple of days a week, our parks, which save young lives, but barely have had city services, et cetera. Then on the other hand, I had other colleagues who said, "Well, it's not that big a problem, it's just that a zero here, look, it's balanced." I said, "We can't do either of those. We can't afford to give up on those things that people rely on, to fulfill their lives, to give them meaning, and we can't also pretend that this problem doesn't exist." So I sat down with our unions. You didn't read headlines about it, because as I mentioned, you do a press conference and yell at them, you get the headline, but you get less results. And I locked the doors, and I said, "You can go home at night, you can see your family." But otherwise, this is our budget deficit. It's $400 million right here, if you represent 50% of the city employees here, you again, that's $200 million. If you represent 60%, that's about $300. And together, we will solve this deficit, we will figure out how we will get to zero. And it was a tough negotiation, but credit to our city unions, they stepped up, and we now have doubled the amount of money that our city employees pay out of their pocket, almost double, from 6% to 11% to their pensions and their healthcare. And when people were just talking about pensions and not healthcare, we looked at healthcare, which was an even bigger driver, it had tripled in the last 10 years. Many of these employers know these costs that are soaring. And so, the city employee, though, they never feel that, because guess how much we pay out of pocket for our revenues? Zero. So for the first time now, with two different unions have negotiated that we start to pay out of pocket, get some skin in the game, so that we feel those prices going up, and we have a stake in making sure those prices come down, negotiating power, make healthier choices, we'll make sure that the risk pool is reduced, and by doing that, reduce our costs. And most importantly, we looked at the number of employees that we had, and in Los Angeles City, we downsized the number of non-sworn, meaning not police and fire, which we didn't touch, but the other employees by 4,500 positions. Now again, it's not something that you think you're going to do when you're running for office, but those moments of crisis that you do not, just to give you an idea, that downsized that workforce, the same levels when Tom Brady got done, so that we have a billion more people in the city. And in doing that, we saved the city from bankruptcy, more than a half billion dollars of pension reform, healthcare reform, reducing costs. I start with the good news about the bad news first, so we can ramp up to the future. But that does stand in stark contrast to the gridlock and the poison politics of other places that we've seen, from Sacramento to Wisconsin to Washington, reforms that tackle pension costs and healthcare costs in ways to create long-term structural change. But you know, when I was elected four times, and I appreciate that in the introduction as Council President, I always said that was the wrong title, it was more group therapist than that, I don't want to get my license approved. As a city council president, you have 14 members, you have to understand the difference between human nature. Some people want to make sure that their issues adjust, other people want their plea go adjust, other people just want to be invited to the party or given credit. And when you understand what makes people tick, you can take the collective body with purpose towards a goal. Here in Los Angeles, we have to ask ourselves a very important question, this turning point in our city's history. Who are we? Who do we want to be? What are the values that inform what Los Angeles is about? I know what it is for me, growing up, the fourth generation Angelino, and only in LA kind of story. A fourth-generation Angelino with an Italian last name, but a half-Mexican, half-Jewish. Both sides of my family came here fleeing war in the early part of last century, settling in Boyle Heights, which is predominantly, of course, now Latino. You can still get pastrami on taco stands on Cesar Chavez's, formerly Brooklyn, haven't you? That's proof that Jews once lived there. I look at the story of my two grandfathers. Salida, who was born in Mexico to a judge who was killed in the Mexican Revolution and carried over the border from my great-grandmother when he was one-year-old, who got the trouble when he was a young man. He would have been classified as an adverse youth today. In fact, I remember being a seven or eight-year-old boy and we spent the weekends over at my grandparents' house. And we were watching television, and there was a very distinguished gentleman on TV. And my grandfather said, "Oh, I know him, he's the mayor of Los Angeles, Tom Bradley." I was so impressed that my grandfather knew our mayor. And I said, "Well, how do you know my grandfather?" He said, "Well, when I was younger and he was younger, he arrested me." He kind of was heading towards a different pathway. I don't know if he because, I mean, mayor Bradley arrested him? Or maybe he was calling, with my grandmother, Juanita? Or maybe he was putting on the station's uniform and fighting for World War II, returning as a citizen. He decided to turn his life around, and he opened up a barber shop right around the corner of USC. And because of that, USC, most of his customers were professors who'd come there after work. And my father grew up in South Los Angeles, went to Washington High School. Never had anybody in his family go to college, learned about college from his professors. And he studied hard, got a scholarship to attend USC. And then my first job when I returned here after graduate school was as a professor at USC. You see, that's the promise of Los Angeles. I live and become two generations later the professor who used to sit in my grandfather's barber's chair. My mother's father, the son of immigrants, started Boyle Heights, then went to Eagle Rock. He trained his classical pianist where he met my grandmother in music school, Eastman School of Music in Rochester, who made both grew up here. And he came back here during the Depression, there wasn't a lot of money in music, so he decided to take up his father's trade as a tailor. And he named the company after his father, my great-grandfather, Louis Roth. And some of the gentlemen in this room will remember Louis Roth's suit, it's one of the finest suits in America. Just next to the Palm Restaurant here downtown, it was loft, green loft, just to the south. That was his factory. They used to go there as a kid, see him do well by his employees, do well for himself. One of his customers was Jack Valencia, who worked in the motion picture industry when President Kennedy was assassinated, President Johnson tapped him to come to D.C. First thing he did was look at the president. Valencia said, "You're the president of the United States now, Mr. Johnson. Look at your suit, you look like a slug." I know this guy now in Los Angeles who makes a very nice suit that my grandfather became tailored to, the president of the United States, one generation after, is president. If we don't provide that escalator of opportunity through great schools and through economic infrastructure, as the prayer went, by making sure that we reduce our taxes, don't raise our taxes, but reduce the taxes that chase businesses literally over our city borders into neighboring cities, Los Angeles will not have that prosperity that defines us. I think you don't ask many times, "Why doesn't L.A. hustle more?" I think we've got to be somewhat of a lazy city because we think, this beautiful legend and this geography that positions us as the eastern capital of the Pacific Rim, the northern capital of Latin America, the western capital of the United States, that all of you, this incredible, you know, diversity and intellectual creativity that we have. Thirty-seven countries that find their largest population outside the home country, or giant here. That it will sell itself. But it won't. We need to compete in this world. And I intend to and have worked on making sure that that comes true. In my own district in Hollywood, eleven years ago, when I took over, it was a hollow shell of itself, a place living off the fumes of the past, a place that, according to the Chamber of Commerce in Hollywood, when a tourist came there, it's the number-one tourist destination in America. They stayed on average for twenty-three minutes. They'd go to the Chinese theater, take a picture, look this way, look that way, get a little scared, and go someplace else in Hollywood. Now, they're staying two or three nights. We've got top hotels in the county, we brought the Academy Awards back across the street from where they started. I was at a star ceremony yesterday, Eric, there's been many of them before. We had 2,000 people there on Hollywood Boulevard. It is a place that is incomplete, but it's roared back. Get the statistic. In the time that we've been working there to bring companies back there, to reduce the taxes and the red tape, to locate media companies and others, we've seen the economic output of Hollywood increase by 475%. The number-one neighborhood in the state of California. That's not even good for Hollywood, that means in Brentwood, and Poymon, and San Pedro, and everywhere in the city, we can spend money on cops and firefighters. When we get business-friendly, the economy comes back. In Hollywood, I remember this less than well. I didn't necessarily think that when I came into office, but I remember when Nielsen, you know, who does the television ratings, was looking to locate their headquarters someplace. They were looking at Chicago, they were looking at Glendale, Burbank. They really wanted to be was in Hollywood, because they're really a company. They said, "You have these taxes, we can't find any parking. But we just opened the new Arc Light Cinema, we had parking during the day I found that." Then I found a law that was passed by a predecessor of mine, but never had been used, which said that any entertainment-based company didn't have to pay our city's gross receipts tax. And I told them that, and they said, "Done." About 500 jobs averaging $80,000 per job in the heart of Hollywood. And guess what happened after that? It gets better. Then the cafes and restaurants opened, the hotel, the W Hotel was built down the street. The amount of money that we generated off of the other taxes, because there's economic activity, way outweighed whatever we would have gotten on our city's business tax, which by the way, we never would have gotten if they never would have come. Two weeks ago, the mayor signed that legislation that I co-authored with my colleague, Mitch Engler, to get rid of our city's gross receipts tax for new car dealers. You may have heard about that. We had 150 car dealers about 20 years ago. Ninety-five of them left Los Angeles in that time period. And if you look at a map, they go just over the border, over the city of Glendale, Pasadena, Burbank, Santa Monica. The amount of money we got from all the 50 that remained was just $5 million for our city's business tax. And I said, "We've got to get rid of this." And people said, "We can't afford to do that. Budget times are tough, what are you going to cut? What programs are you going to get rid of?" And I said, "You know, every single dealer that we get back in sales tax is $1 million. It's right now going to other cities, even though it's L.A. residents that are going to buy their cars. All we need to get is five of those 95 to come back, and we're already at zero, and everything above that is gravy." Well, in the face of opposition, we got it done. We got the mayor to sign it. We already have five that are coming back this year alone. By next year and the year after, we'll have more money for cops, we'll have more money for our libraries, we'll have more money for our parks, et cetera. And we're able to do those things too and revitalize it, not just by focusing on that, but focusing on those values and those programs that are important to us as Angelinos. In Los Angeles, it doesn't matter where you come from. It doesn't matter what language or people you get here. It doesn't matter who your parents are, how you worship God, who you love. It doesn't matter where you fit in the hierarchy. What defines us, and has always defined us in Los Angeles, is the size of our heart, our willingness to work hard, to think creatively. And yet, when we see government getting away, there are some things government should be doing, should be doing better and be doing well. In my own district, when I looked at the streets, and I was appalled that every year since World War II, our streets rating had gone down. Citywide, it's a 62 out of 100, it's barely a passing grade. I moved mine up to 82, it's the highest now in the city. But hopefully, if I get a chance in coming years to be in charge of the entire city, I have a plan to take the money that we have from our half-cent sales tax, which is going to be there for the next 27 years, part of the cost of the payback, and knock it out in two or three years. Imagine 1,600 miles our main streets paved in the next two or three years, putting people back to work and doing it cheaper and quicker than we would if we waited 27 years, because it costs us about 5% or 10% more each year to pave a street. You can bond against all that money today, 3.75% or even less. You tell me what you want. Fewer streets over three decades, not putting people back and costing us more? Or more streets for cheaper, quicker, and getting some people back to work in a city where our unemployment rate is 50% national levels? When people wonder in Los Angeles, can we do the big thing anymore? I point them to the heart of the city. I point them to Hollywood, which has come back. I point them to the 12 schools that we built in my district because half the kids couldn't attend a school in their own neighborhood. And when we wondered why gang membership was high and why crime was out of control, children weren't even connected to the streets they grew up in, because we were putting them on buses stuck in traffic and schools far away from their neighborhood. Those schools that did exist didn't have after-school programs. And even though the city of Los Angeles has no responsibility for our schools, of course, we have a responsibility for our schools. All of us in this room do. It's not going to be the school district that solves it, it's going to be a city of people together. You see, one person, or 15 people, or 40,000 city employees can do some good, but 4 billion of us in the city, or 10 billion of us in the region, are an unstoppable force. So I invite you to continue to do what you are doing as Rotarians, as Angelinos. But I want you to do it for L.A. You see, we're always asked, and we're generous about it, and honest, my friends, to do things for our cops, help us cure cancer, you know, animal shelter. We're asked by national politicians all the time to donate a little money. California thinks about its wait class always. But how often do you ask to do something for L.A.? Today, I'm asking you to do that. I'm asking you whether you have kids in school, or whether you have kids in public school, or whether you have kids at all, to look at that public school that is in your neighborhood, see what you can be able to do. To look around and to help a small business get started, and to help me as I try to abolish our city's gross receipts tax altogether, to be a voice saying, "It is time for us to do that, to make L.A. business-friendly." To look at your own company, hopefully when I'm mayor, and see if we can have a job for every child that wants to work, every teenager, in the summertime. I was just in Watts, talking to the gaming task force there two weeks ago. And they had summer job program. They had 95 jobs they could offer. And 700 kids showed up wanting those jobs. 700 kids who want to work, who want to learn the lessons of hard work and entrepreneurialism. And we have to say to 90% of them, "Thank you, but no thank you. We can do better." In a city where we see the generosity and the creativity and the diversity that is unmatched in the face there, we can do these things. When we look at our airport, our gateway to the world, the first eye that people have on us, when people land here, and might as well be in Detroit, although I always say that's unfair to Detroit, because they've got a much nicer airport than here. We should be able to have Disney characters first entrance here, greeting your kids if they come off a Trans-Pacific flight. We should have contemporary art at this moment when L.A. is the contemporary art capital of the world, hanging there. We should have bands like they do in Austin, which fancies itself a music capital, but we are the music capital of the world, playing in terminal. And the food that is part of this culinary revolution, a city where, you know, the Korean short-grilled taco can become the latest craze. A place where we have these incredible collisions of culture coming together, highlighted there. We should be able to show off who we are and have the infrastructure that picks up that passenger and takes them via rail to a downtown hotel instead of struggling to find out what rental car facility is. We should look at our port in San Pedro, which is an amazing asset, and bring the city to the sea and the sea to the city. It's the largest undeveloped waterway anywhere in this country. And it is the engine, the economic engine of this country. I can go to any congressional district in this country and tell them how many jobs come from America's port, Twin Ports of San Pedro and Long Beach. And when folks say, "I don't know, L.A. should be able to do these big things. I don't know if we can do it." I point you to this. That satellite that went up, the dock with the space station, came from innovation here in L.A. I talked to folks who were part of the stem cell initiative in this state doing medical research. And they said, "In the next few months, they will announce that they were able to cure blindness." They will have somebody literally walk out of the hospital scene because of the innovation of our medical researchers here, and the first recorded case of somebody being cured of AIDS. Cured of AIDS. When we see we can do those things, you tell me we can't pave our streets? That we can't fix our airport? That we can't have a world-class infrastructure? That we can't become business-friendly? We can. Not only can we, we must. And Los Angeles's fate and the future is going to come together not because of ideas at City Hall, or in a boardroom, or in a university. They're going to come from the street level, where that innovation and that knowledge exists. When I first ran, I'll close on this, when I first ran for office, the best part of the experience was going to what it owed. I'm not by nature necessarily an extrovert, and nobody's surprised because I'm in politics. But you have to overcome your fear of not wanting someone to worry or bother them. They have to overcome their fear in the city of answering the door. And when they realize that you're not trying to convert them to something, or sell them something, that you don't want to paint the numbers on their curve, but you just want to have a conversation. There's a sacred space that we've lost in there that emerges. Where they're like, "You want to hear from me about my block? About my street, my neighborhood, my city?" And the lessons that they tell you, "Well, why does that empty lot down the street have to stay empty? Can't be a community garden or a park? Why is my child here walking to school?" The most basic thing. Why is it tough for my college graduate to find a job today? Let me tell you the experience when I started a business. I was walking around, you know, the suburb like those of ours close to where I live, my family. I was talking to a friend, and she wanted to start a new business here in Los Angeles, doing electronic recycling, computers and things like that, hiring former gang members. And we talked about a great social mission and double bottom line. She went to our city planning department a couple of weeks ago to get her conditional lease permit, and they said at the counter, "Well, you sure you want to do this?" She said, "Well, of course I do." They said, "Well, it's going to be tough, it's going to cost $10,000, probably need a consultant, there's all these regulations." And then later on, that same individual emailed my friend and told her, "If you still want to do this, this is who you should contact." And she shot an email back that she shared with me, she said, "If I still want to do this, do you know how much I've invested by the time I come to that counter? What if we had a city that said, "If you still want to do this, thank you. We're excited. This might prove tough, but we're going to get you through this. Here's some lessons learned, and we're your partner. My job depends on making sure that you get that done." You see, I want to see in Los Angeles a culture that puts not only the city back to work, but that works for this city. I want to see a culture that doesn't reward every fine and violation and cover your own behind. I want to have a culture that rewards our city employees, who are good employees, but they need a different culture to compete for, that how quickly they get a business open, how many jobs they create, how much were they able to do to make someone's life easier. In my own district, the most basic thing we do is take constituent complaints. The old-fashioned way is you hope nobody ever comes, and when they do, you might give them a little bit of service. Two years ago, we innovated, some of you may know 311, which is one of all the City Hall. That was innovative at the time, you don't have to know which is the partner. But if you call lately, come back, something can wait for 20 minutes on hold. So it was a couple of years ago, I'm a big high-tech guy, I looked at an L.A. company developing with your smartphone an application to take a photo, use your camera phone, a popple or graffiti, and because there's GPS in this phone, select where it is, and then hit send. About a 20-second piece of work, it's called Garcia 311. It only works in my district, so you'll have to let me know. When you do that, it can then text you back two days later and say, "That popple was filled, that graffiti was painted out." And what that does is now, you're not just a passive recipient of help, you're actively involved. And you think that you got a role in paving that street. Maybe the next thing is you want to turn the neighborhood's school over, or help a kid get a job in the summertime. And you start to see the threads of our future come together. Let us stitch together civic fabric that is either frayed or maybe has never been put together in this city. Strong enough to bring us together, strong enough to lift us up, strong enough to propel us into the future. And I will truly close on this, which is, you know, there was a poll done by the Q Charitable Trust a couple of years ago. It asked Americans, "Which of these two phrases are closer to your thinking about government? The government or our government?" And when we looked at the results, by age, it was fascinating. Americans 65 and over who had lived through tough times, World War II, right struggles, Americans 65 and over who had lived through tough times, World War II, rice struggles, sometimes the Great Depression, overwhelmingly, over 85% of them said, "Our government, not the government." But asked the same question of Americans who are 35 and younger, who'd only seen or heard about what government does wrong, that has to be downsized, choked, strangled, drowned, it's almost violent language we use about ourselves and democracy ultimately, it was the opposite. Over 80% of young Americans said, "The government, not our government." I work every single day to improve government, to make it more accountable, to make people get served by it the way that they deserve with their taxpayer dollars, but we must together reclaim our government and a sense of common purpose in this city and this country. And I hope for the next, you know, seven or eight months as I'm out there on the campaign trail, that whether it's me or another candidate, or just even if you don't live in the city of LA, the state improving mayor is going to be, that you help us stitch together that fabric to reclaim our government, our city, and our country. Thank you all. And congratulations to those who worked, we still have enough money left for our calligraphers, and I wanted to present this to President Jay on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, congratulate him, he's a personal friend as well as the president here, somebody I've enjoyed spending time with, and I want to congratulate him and the entire group here at LA5, for your true message.
And Eric, it looks like I get to ask the first question right there. Although I told you I mainly, but...
He works for the City of Los Angeles, one of those good employees.
So let me just ask what you did, you addressed it a little bit, but that our current mayor took a beating when he was trying to deal with the school issue and how much control the mayor's office should have. So although you addressed it a little bit, can you maybe in 30 seconds or so, let us know, whether it's you or anybody, how much role the mayor's office should have in the direct supervision and direction of the school district, either the board or the 10 partnership of schools that are going on now?
Thank you. No mayor can afford not to be directly involved in our schools, the future depends on it. We have no direct role in the formal terms, although I would certainly be in favor of that, but this mayor tried to do that, there's a lot of legal reasons. We have many cities, not just the city of LA, that are part of LA unified, and that's a very difficult, probably, fight to ever win, although I do think it would be more accountable if the schools reported to the mayor, and I certainly wouldn't ever oppose something that would implore to do that. But in the meantime, a mayor can help elect a good school board and make sure that it's a majority of folks who want to continue to reform our schools, to reward good teachers, but also to make sure that we have innovation in our schools. For me and my own district, I've been very involved. I remember my first year, I took some city money to build a library and community center in Mount Washington, an elementary school. It never had one, the kids need on the blacktop, they didn't have a single library door. And when folks said, "Why are you using city money? The school district has a larger budget than the city of LA." I said, "I have this money, this anti-poverty money, federal money, to build a community center. If I could build it 20 blocks away from a school or in the school, why wouldn't I put it in the school?" We do a lot of lip service, the school should be the center of our community, and yet when we have that moment, we want more credit because it's going to have our name on it 20 blocks away, be the city of LA. Belmont High School, which is in walking distance from here, a short walking distance. When I first came in office, it had a 75% dropout rate. And we introduced two things. One, we used those city funds again, we, for instance, just recently built them their football field, half of it was our money and half was the school district. I'll never forget the 16-year-old girl who came up, and we've worked with record parks to keep that as an open facility for the community on weekends and after school. The 16-year-old girl came up to me, she was a student, she said, "Thank you so much, Mr. Garcetti, for getting this done." I said, "Of course, you're welcome, it's your money too, but why are you thanking me?" She said, "Last year, they said we had a football field, but it was a bunch of dirt. I was embarrassed to go here, my grades were bad, I was going to drop out, but now, look at this field. Two months ago, I came here, it was beautiful, it's any school, anywhere in this city. I joined a sports team, my grades are up, and I'm the graduate, Mr. Garcetti." You know, I was like, "That is exactly why we have to do this." But just to be honest, I'm very supportive of charter schools, because I think they keep competition going between our schools, in the same neighborhood, same kids, same low income, not taking the best kids away. Community and White Rose is a great charter school, had its first graduating class the year before. Guess what their graduation percentage was their first year? 95%. And 75% of those kids going to four-year colleges and universities in the same neighborhood. We can do this, and I will be very involved as mayor and chairman.
Yes. Eric, I'd like to know, what is your vision as the great grandson of a shemata manufacturer, like, and also the grandson of a barber in the community? What is your vision in promoting small business? And what funding have you initiated at this point with regards to small business administration and opportunities for small business development?
Well, as the grandson of, you know, a shemata business and a barber, I think everybody should and deserves a good haircut and a fine suit, so I will thank that as a centime of what I do. But also, I think that it is very important to make sure that we realize that small businesses become our medium-sized businesses, and those are where the jobs are created. Two things. One, as I mentioned, I want to also see these girls receive tax and I'm doing that specifically in this. Two, though, we do have, even with the end of things like the community redevelopment agency, monies that we have, loan funds that we can put to work with small businesses. We've done that in Hollywood, we have something called Section 108, which provides loans for new jobs that are created, and also empowerment zones, which give tax credits for people who go to lower-income areas and create jobs. We can actually pay for almost half of the salaries of many of those employees. We also have to make sure that we make people have the skills to match what small business needs. I mean, this is a larger company, but there's a lot of small healthcare companies too. Kaiser Hospital in that district wasn't hiring or advertising to hire in Los Angeles anymore when I started here. And when I asked them why, they said, "Nobody's graduating with those skills. We advertise in Arizona, we advertise in the Philippines, but not here." So we work with local high schools and local small businesses and community colleges, which I think are critical. And we have a partnership for 10,000 new businesses right now, Golden Sachs, to do that, to make sure that we have small businesses sprouting up right here through our community and college districts to teach entrepreneurialism. I'll end on this, because I know we're short on time. One of the most exciting things I've worked on, we were commemorating the 20th anniversary of the, the 20th anniversary of LA Ryan's recently, and I worked together with a group called Operation Hope to develop something called Business in a Box. You know, Junior Achievement, I was part of Junior Achievement, it's great, teaches you, you learn to meet folks in business, but this goes a step further. It actually gives a box to students, and by the time they graduate, because in their world, there's probably not going to be a factory job waiting for them, they have created their own small business. It is probably the most valuable skill we can give to our students. We want to have city entrepreneurs, and if we can cut that red tape and reduce those
It's an honor to have you here today. We have, in honor of your presentation, we have a certificate for you as well, as a... I'm trying to read my own handwriting. As an officer in the Navy Reserves, and in the honor of your presentation, I'm making a $1,000 donation, and it's named in your name, to help homeless veterans. So, we appreciate you so much. We're short on time, but I just have to throw this in, Eric, I would mention this. We actually first met in an unusual place, on a nuclear attack submarine, USS Los Angeles. We were invited to the last voyage of the USS Los Angeles attack submarine from San Diego to Los Angeles, where it was mentioned to be, well, it was decommissioned. And it was a VIP tour, obviously, obviously why Eric got invited, I don't know why I got invited, but somehow I ended up on the boat, and we had a fabulous time. Welcome to the third meeting of the 104th year of Rotary Club of Los Angeles, the fifth and best Rotary Club in the world. Please give a special LA5 welcome to our speaker, the Honorable Eric Garcetti, Council Number 15, District City of Los Angeles, Honorable Member of LA5. And a warm LA5 welcome to my fellow Rotarians and all of our guests today. Please stand, the invocation by Law Reed, Principal Reed Enterprises, followed by the pledge of allegiance to be led by Simone Lu, Vice President Investments, Post-Parto Advisors,
Thank you, President Jay. If it's comfortable for you, please bow while I pray. Good afternoon, morning. We're the Rotary Club of Los Angeles, and we come to you today at the beginning of a new year. We're embarking upon a new year, Lord, and we'll bring, at this time, President Jay to your attention. We ask that you would give him the courage of David, the wisdom of Solomon, the compassion of Christ, as he deals with the challenges that are before him this year. Thank you that he has a willingness to serve us, and, Lord, may we help him during this year. And then, Lord, I thank you for the food, I thank you for those who have prepared it, and those who are serving us. And finally, Lord, if Eric Garcetti is to be our next mayor, I pray that you would give him the wisdom to get us out of a dilemma we are in financially, and with no new taxes. He says, I pray, and use his name.
Simone Lu. Again, Vice President Investments, Post-Parto Advisors, to be as in the...
Please just join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Simone. And now our patriotic song, "America the Beautiful," will be led by Jack Dimm, excuse me, Chair of our invocation and music committee, and accompanied on the piano by Tony Medley, attorney, author, film critic, and our club photographer.
Oh, beautiful forested skies, for amber waves of gray, for purple mountains majesty, of the fruitful rain, a merry-go-round America, God shed his grace on thee, and crown thy good with all, from sea to shining sea.
Bravo. Please be seated. Now, please welcome our club secretary, Alan Bernstein, Director of Client Solutions and Ace Marketing and Communications, who will introduce our head table and visiting
Thank you, President Jay. It is my privilege to introduce our head table guests. Please stand as I call your name and remain standing, and please, Rotarians, hold your applause until all of our introduced, our visiting speaker, the honorable Garcetti,
Arthur Bissell, CEO, flex designer, international, and Vice Chair of Program. Russ Wittenberg, Chief Financial Officer, for Forest Lawn, Memorial Parks and Orchestras, and today's program sponsor. Matthew Lately, Chairman, Lately Legal Group, PC, a new member to be introduced today, and a Trojan, and a member of my fraternity. And his sponsor, Ken Chong, Vice President, CID Residential, President-elect, and our favorite, Bruin, Carol Schaefer, owner, Carol Schaefer Fine Jewelry and Perk D.I.A. Theater Extraordinaire, Eric Weiss, LA5 Board Member, and his sponsor, Dr. Volker Weiss, President of the Rotary Club of Syracuse, New York, number 42. They are celebrating their 100th anniversary this year, congratulations and welcome to LA5. Paul St. John, Multi-District Chair, Rotary Youth Exchange Service Scannex, serving Southern California, Nevada, Arizona, Hawaii, and Utah, and our Vice President and Program Chair. Please give our warm LA5 welcome to our head table guests today. Do we have any visiting Rotarians today? I hope we do. Yes, so, please stand and tell us your name, the name of your club, and let us know if you have a flag to exchange.
Hi, my name is Jan Lechner, from the Rotary Club of Schrammokanzer in Germany. I'm quite a regular, yes, if you would like, I'm a gentleman, so the flag hasn't been exchanged since, I think, 15 years ago. Very happy to be here at the time, thanks a lot. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Archie Eddie Forbes, the District Governor of 6910 in Georgia. I was a club member here in 1993 to 97, and it's because of Frank Off that I'm where I am now.
Hello, and welcome. I'm delighted to be here as the President of the Rotary Club of Syracuse, just celebrated its 100th year, and I give you greetings from Syracuse. Hope that maybe someday we can welcome guests from here to our club. Thank you very much.
Very nice. Thank you. Okay, we're going to try something new again today. Would all guests and their hosts please stand? Guests and hosts please stand. The Sergeant of Arms will circulate throughout the room, and with each host, please tell us the name of your guest, what company they work for, and where they're from. Guests and hosts, please introduce.
I'm John Lockhart, our guest today is Ezekiel Oderov, with Gumball Foundation, they help kids in inner city to basically by using Gumball machines.
First, Dave Schrabel, my guest today is Anthony Sullivan, from, I'm 20 years, I'm
One more thing, John, as you reminded me, please, the Sergeant of Arms, one of your business cards, please for the guests, there will be a drawing for bottles of wine at the end of the meeting for all of our guests.
I'd like to introduce my guest, my wife, Ms. Shaw, and she's from Newport Beach, she's
Duncan Yu, my guest from HSBC Bank, and he's with commercial and industrial.
This is Don Hammett, he's with the law firm, Don Hammett, and a law teacher. This is Vostick, he's a school teacher with Vista Middle School, and candidate for City Council District 11. This is A. Oliver, my brother, and second year student at Boston University. This is Kevin Clough, he's a, he's a discovery consultant of Protiviti. This is John Sarandu, and he's also a discovery consultant of Protiviti.
Hi, from my daughter, my guest Madison Ball, representing AC's Stell Middle School, 7th grade.
Your business card!
Being the eighth and seventh kid, she's the coolest kid to come with things with that, so it's a privilege to have everybody. I am very proud.
I'm Michael McKee, my guest is Mr. Bijan, Joe Behary, Joe Behary's Fine Jewelry, right here on South Street.
And I think on the last one, my guest, Dr. Karen Halligan. She is a veterinarian, and we met last week in the midst of the Queen of the Colossus at the British Council General's residence.
One more. One more here.
I'm Joe Alday, I'm here with my mom's, the teacher.
Okay, we're going to do this. Okay, 50/50 drawing, all 50/50 tickets are being circulated throughout the room. A single ticket is drawn at the end of the meeting to determine the winner. One half of the proceeds go to the club, and the rest go to the lucky winner. Please place your lunch tickets on the table in front of you for your waiter to collect. And remember, to turn off all cell phones, they may not be used in the California club, and I understand that President Jay intends to levy massive fines against any violators, so please, home users, beware. Thank you very much. Announcements, as a reminder, the first District Breakfast will be held July 31st, that's this Tuesday, at the West End LA Ice Hotel.